Six o'clock. Ready? Call this meeting order. The President, this is the by the United States of America, and to the Republic of which it stands, one nation under God, in the visible, liberatory, and justice for all. Apologize for the face mask that formed everyone on the school committee that I had a cold this weekend. It turns out I'm a bigger baby than I thought. And so I'm just doing this so no one else can catch my snort. Thanks, Ron. Start off with recognitions. I would like to start with my recognition. I'm yielding my recognition to Mrs. Hanson. Would you like to tell us a little bit about the DC trip?
Thank you very much. I am so excited to be here today because as of March 16th, I found out that we had all of the funds we needed for all of the students to go. It was a $36,000 trip, and in one year, we raised over $24,000. So when the kids want to go on this trip, in my heart, I want to know that they want to go and the parents want to send them. And so many of them this year could not afford it. And I said, don't worry, we'll get you there. And every time I said that, I went, huh, how are we going to get them there? Well, I should have known that I could count on so many people to help us get there. I just want to recognize the businesses that helped us, especially if we had an event at their place, or like Clem's, we had a bake sale. Brookfield Orchard let us sell fudge and take a profit from that. Proudly Fuel, we had a heating oil raffle. Abby's Famous Dog Treats actually donated up to $400 of sales, so they didn't even take a cut of that. Sassy Jewels Boutique, we sold T-shirts. Common Ground, they had farmer's markets over the summer and we sold plants. Clam Box, we had two nights of fundraising there, which raised $350. We had a parent host a cornhole tournament and we raised $1,500 there thanks to Michael Giavande. We had a spring luncheon just recently at the seniors center hosted by Esther Noel and we raised $1,200 there. We had a few donations that were sponsored, that sponsored a student completely. So we had the outreach Episcopal Christian Women's Group. They sponsored a student. We had an anonymous donor sponsor a student. We had current and former faculty give generous donations. We had a donation from England. They came from Mrs. Petty and it went directly to a student. I want to have a, say a special thank you to my daughter Megan and my husband Dave, who put up with all of my fundraising shenanigans. And Megan, who goes along, is my sidekick. All my family and friends who participated in most, if not all, of the fundraisers. And a special thank you to the North Brookfield community, who just really got behind this trip and helped us every step of the way. So where do we go from here? So from now until the trip, we're going to be meeting on Wednesday during flex block to keep the students up to date on what they need to know. And the questions come during that time. It flies by because they want to know every single thing. We have our itinerary, which I shared with you. I'll share with the students this Wednesday because I just got that. And I'm finalizing all the paperwork. And before you know it, April 25th will be here. We'll be on our way to DC. But a very special thank you for everyone who helped these kids go on this trip. I can't say that enough. If you have any questions? I can't wait to report to you when we get back. We'll have some kids come in and give you a little talk.
Yeah, thank you.
All right. Well, before I start, I just want to thank Mrs. Hanson for presenting tonight, but also kind of being the leader for the past two DC trips that I've been part of here at the high school. So thank you again for all your efforts. You do a great job organizing and getting all the students and the families on the same page with this great trip. Thank you very much. Last week, last Thursday, December 9th, Dr. Gould and I had the privilege of joining Sophia Herlen, traveling to Holy Cross, where she was recognized along with 35 other exceptional scholars from around the Southern Western County area. Sophia was recognized for her amazing academic excellence over the past four years. So we felt it was important to also recognize her here tonight. So Sophia, if you can come down, give this certificate for your... So this reads, congratulations on being recognized at the Western County Comptendents Association Angle Scholarship Recognition Ceremony for academic excellence. Congratulations. You're welcome. That is it for our next slide.
Anyone else have any particular recognitions? Approval of minutes. Minutes we're looking to approve are the minutes from Monday, February 27th, 2023.
Second.
All in favor of approving minutes? Public participation.
Hi, Rich Rigney, PR and our Chair of the Union. I just have a quick question. Does the school today have any update on the regionalization process right now? I know there's a member on it, and if not, could we have one maybe next meeting? Sort of interested to know what's going on with that.
So I'll give you what I know. The regionalization agreement between the towns was sent to the attorney back in November, December for their review. I got an email from the Chairman of the Regionalization Committee, I want to say the end of last month, saying that he got it back to the attorney and he was looking at the schedule of the next meeting within the next couple of weeks. I'm not very familiar. So it actually was on my list of things to do today to reach out to and see if we have one scheduled. But as far as I know, there's no other meeting scheduled. So I reached out and I've got the information back to you through the... However, it gets back to you.
Thank you.
All right. Anyone else in the public? Another good turnout tonight.
I just a question on the follow-up on the regionalization. I mean, is there, so the Chair of the Committee is the Chair, is he the Chair of the...
Yes.
I mean, I don't know how we would do this going, I mean, is there a way going forward we could have better communication from him to our school committee or through Ron to us? Or like, how would we address that? Because I, like Rich just asked, I mean, I'm on the school committee and I don't care anything. So like, how would we coordinate with him to either A, be more responsive, or, you know, deliver information to everybody as to what's going on? Do I have to go through that committee?
Yeah, I don't know that I can deliver it to everybody because I just don't think that's mechanism that keeps you prepared to follow through.
Yeah.
I believe Tim gets the emails.
Right.
So I think if Tim wanted to follow on those emails to us, I think that's a viable option. I can do that as well. I just don't give a...
But the email that we received on Friday, it's just about the next week. We're just variable information.
That's why I'm not there.
We've canceled some meetings.
Well, and that's why I asked. I mean, there's been cancellations and I'll ask Ron and Ron will tell me why, just like he answered the question. So he clearly doesn't, I mean, he, I feel like, I don't know if he's not being told everything that's going on or there's just nothing going on. Even if it's like, hey, guys, there's nothing going on, I think we should be letting people know that.
I think also for clarity purposes, the stage that we're at, Ron, correct me if I'm wrong, is the reworking of what would be an agreement in a regionalization of the two districts.
Right.
Which then has to be brought to towns and everyone else involved. Because it's sort of the legal step of drafting what that agreement would look like.
Correct. So just because I actually went to look at it this morning and I forgot why I pulled up my notebook. There's an email on my laptop. It's hard getting old, sorry. But that's why I did it, because I wanted to look at it. It was actually March 1st when the email came out. And it says, I want to apologize for Blaine giving this out to you. I received it this week or so ago. And with everything going on, budget season negotiation, project work, travel, and family, this has not been on the top of my list. And I feel it is not received the attention it should have. I am talking to Maureen and have meetings scheduled for tonight. But I feel everyone should have the ability to read and digest this prior to the meeting and discussing, therefore no meeting tonight. I would like to propose after everyone has had a chance to read this, schedule a meeting to discuss, I will check with the council, but I am available as of right now. And he goes on to say what his bill really is. And again, I apologize for the delay, the Chairman. And so that's the email I got. And that's the last I heard.
Yeah. And by no means am I directing anything towards you necessarily. It's just to me, to me, this is a huge deal for the town and even for their towns. And I feel like there's, even if it strictly is like Tim Canada mentioned, hey, here's the stage we're at. There's really nothing going on. It's all the legal phase. Even if we deliver that news out to the town, the people who want to know about it, I mean, it would be, I think, in our best interest to try and keep people as informed as possible so we don't have a teacher at public comment asking a question. I just think that's a bad look for all three towns. You know, I think we need, maybe he's the wrong person to be Chair in the group. That's just my opinion. I mean, maybe he's not as available as he needs to be. I'm not sure. But I don't, yeah. And I don't know. I'm just throwing it out there. There doesn't seem to be much movement on anything. So I will follow. Just my two cents.
I think the last email, they were looking at the schedule meeting on March 15th. So I don't know where we're at. I get my...
I literally couldn't see that email at all. The last I got was that email on March 1st. I had not seen anything else.
I think that was one of the dates. But I received first ones from Superintendent Quaybuck. And that's how I posted meeting across the town. And it's been, it's been very quiet for the past week. So I don't know where they're at. I can echo your frustration. I think Ron, you know, we've been at all meetings and we don't hear much. Meetings get canceled. I'm glad this is, you know, kind of a lot of the dark that's going on.
Right.
And not for, I mean, look, it's not anybody else's issue, right? But I do not go into my office for my new town or Quaybuck because I don't want to miss it. I almost missed one here because I went into the office. So for me to take the day and stay at home and work from home and then have them cancel it that night.
Exactly. And I've been on the way to these meetings. Texted you and said, hey, what time is the meeting starting? And they say it's canceled. It's like, well, how are we going to regionalize? If we can't even schedule meetings, I guess, you know, that's just my two cents. Is there, we need to get something going there. So I will reach out. Okay. Because I know, I know the taxpayers are going to start asking a lot of questions too because it came up at town meeting. You know, somebody brought it up. Nobody knows anything. So, so, yeah.
It's almost being used like as a potential cudgel by people. They did deeply thought of regionalization, you know, the budgetary concerns and so forth. And people are speaking of it in also negative light. And I don't know, you know, there's a lot of unknowns. And I think it's just another fear of unknown. And with the lack of information forthcoming, it makes it difficult for people. That's, that's a public perception that I would...
And I would agree with you. And I think when there's a lot of information, it gets filled with something.
Right.
Whether it's the truth or not, it gets filled with something. So I agree.
Thank you. Sorry.
No, that's good. That was good. Good to mention that. All right. Student representative report.
So I have a little bit to talk about today. We, for past preparations, we finished our basketball concessions at the conclusion of the basketball season. And I just wanted to thank Mary Meebichi for all the work she did as the Chair for that. Our annual unity week was a couple of weeks ago in February. It was a week-long event where we helped support and create a stronger sense of community and unification in our school. And we kind of set it up like a spirit week. We participated in school counselors' week. We encouraged students to make cards for the counselors and just stop in and say hi. We put in announcements thanking them for all that they do. And at the end of the week, the student council bought gifts for them, just as our way of saying thank you. Recently, we attended the MASC spring conference in Hyannis. And we were honored to be recognized as a Council of Excellence. The Council of Excellence Award has four different rankings. There are silver, bronze, and gold and honorable mentions. And with the hard work of our members through the submission of our excellence book, we were recognized as a gold council for earning 46 to 50 points on our excellence book submission. And also at our Hyannis Conference, we sent six members, including myself, along with Ms. Malone. And we spent three days at our conference. The members had a wonderful time and we got to learn many new skills and tools to help us be better leaders in our school. We also participated in the Special Olympics Polar Plunge. We ran into the ocean. It was very, very cold. But we did it to show support for Special Olympics. And all of the MASC student councils in total raised $56,000 for Special Olympics. For upcoming information, we have our spring conference on April 13th at West Boylston. And then the week before April vacation, we will be having our lip sync and spring spirit week. We will have different themes for each day. And on Friday, we will have our seven through 12 class versus class lip sync competition. And the sixth graders will be invited to come watch. And more information about the individual spirit days will come out soon. We're still trying to decide exactly what we want for each day. But you can also see some pictures in our packets. There should be some pictures from our Hyannis Conference along with a picture of our excellence, Council of Excellence Award.
Was the outside air temperature when you did the plunge?
I'm not exactly sure.
It was cold.
But it was...
There's always the base sea breeze that we hate.
Yeah, it was very cold. Oh, and I also wanted to mention the babysitting for these events, for these meetings. So unfortunately, our student council will be able to do it. We just have too many members involved in sports. But we are passing it on to Ms. Pelisir. She's the guidance counselor and she runs the volunteer opportunities. And she's going to reach out to the juniors and seniors in need of volunteer hours to see if there's anyone who'd be available.
All right. Thank you for that, Dave.
Thank you, Olivia.
Thank you.
School committee reports. I just sent you some good info on the exit survey, so I'll get back to you on that. I'm sorry. This weekend was a minimal loss weekend, but...
I'm really hopeful that next month we'll have something.
Yeah, we'll have, we'll have an update next month. That's a good...
I would, I would like to have it all ready and submitted to whoever can see it and so that we're all set and ready.
Yeah. So what we'll do, I'll talk to you about it. We'll pull that together because you have a couple different ones. There's stuff in each one.
Right.
And then we can send it out ahead of time because we have to vote on it as a committee. So we get it to the other committee members. We can get that on the document.
Yeah, that would be good because end of school year is coming fast.
End of the school year is coming up fast indeed.
It happens whether you want it to or not.
Yeah. I've seen the same. It's a nice way to say that.
It'd actually be weird if it didn't. Financial reports.
All right. So I just had a quick update to this month's packet. I mentioned this last month that I was going to do this for this meeting and beyond. What gives you an idea of what we just spent at the date, FY '23, $3.8 million, which is roughly 60%, of our total operating budget for FY '23. This is broken down into two major categories. Payroll, which is around 2.6, and vendors and other, which accounts for roughly $1.2 million of those other expenditures. So what we, what we will be looking at from here on out is making sure that we are drawing down all of our grants. The grant drawdown window starts on the 20th and runs to the 30th of every month. So we do that out of my office. And that money obviously goes back to the budget to offset those costs. And we allocate that money prior to the start of this week here, just like we did at FY '23 for our budget. So those are things we've been looking at. And, you know, as you can see, we want to make sure that we are, are pretty on mark with these numbers. But when I see that number, and Sydney Schofield, who's been new to her position for the past month or so, has done a great job of looking at everything we've done to this point, we're on target for our expenditures for FY '23. We're right around 60% that will need to be expended for this fiscal year. The other documents that are attached to this part of the packet are some direct copies from iVision, which is our accounting system. And they've also attached copies of these sign warrants that I've done in the past. So you have those as well.
So these are from iVision. These are from the town. The pages eight through 13, whatever it is, of the PDF you sent us.
What page are those?
In the PDF. PDF page eight through, I'm sorry.
Yeah, the sign is iVision, so it's the same program.
Do you have any questions on the balance sheet? As you reconcile these things, those help them make sure we go through that process to move the money.
Right.
This is our, this is basically our benchmark.
Right. This is, this is all over the PDF this year. Now that we have HR, Mrs. Vander sitting in the back of the place, that's what we're doing.
All right. This W C E C update.
So the Southern Western County Education Collaborative, this is, we're one of 17 districts as part of this collaborative. This is a collaborative that we use here in North Brookfield to, to work with some of our students. We have a student who is currently attending a school in this collaborative. They also provide additional special education services. They come into the school district to work with certain students. So I attend monthly meetings to get updates on the collaborative, see how they're doing physically, how they're doing with their employment opportunities, and basically talking about what they provide our school district and other members of the collaborative. So what I did was just added last month's meeting notes to your district packets. You can look at. It's not something that we vote on. It's just more information for all of you. Like I said, I attend these meetings monthly. And going forward, if you'd like, I can attach these minutes every month. You can see what's going on in perspective. That's purely information on this problem.
I think, I don't know. If the rest of you agree with me, I think it'd be fine. We just got these emails separately on the side of this packet. So they lost the staffing cable. That's fine. You guys go with that?
Yes.
Superintendent's report.
So two parts to this, and I gave you an attachment. I can go through that quickly. But I forgot to attach this first packet. We're looking at, I don't want to steal the thunder from Dr. Gould, I'm missing his free sleep, but give me some brief updates from March. The first is that since August, as you may or may not know, we've been meeting with a separate group, the leadership team, with our community outreach program. We have monthly meetings to discuss how we can kind of bridge that gap between community and the school district. And we've helped organize and plan a lot of events throughout the course of the year. Our next event that we're planning currently is our health fair, which is for both physical and mental health awareness and supports for families. That will be Wednesday, April 26th. An email went out today to prospective, I don't use the word vendors, who are participants to this fair. And we're hoping to, to garner a lot of attention and really make kind of some of the programs accessible to families. And so they know where to go for these supports and this information. Secondly, the North Brookfield High School recently completed, I know Dr. Gould is going to talk about this as well, recently completed with all of our students, some Alice conversations with Officer Jeff Martin. So earlier this year, during one of our PD days, we sent, we gave our staff some of the information and went through some drills, Alice drills by our staff, which had not completed in a couple of years. I felt it was important to not only do that with our staff and have those live drills, but also have those conversations with our students. We want our students, I know we don't want to talk about this, but have them be aware that in any case of emergency, this is what you need to do. So we're having similar conversations, not the exact same conversations, but conversations with our younger students starting in the next few weeks. And this really entails Officer Martin reading a book to the students about safety, about following adults in the event of a crisis. So we do not get into the nitty-gritty, if you will, of what can we do if there was an intruder. But we talk about the scene. We talk about how you need to listen to your adults and the teachers in the classroom if that needs to happen. So it'll be better going home to parents, giving them the timeline for these conversations, but these will happen before April break. And then lastly, I already mentioned this. Sophia Herlen, who we honored earlier today, was one of 35 students who's recognized for her excellence in Southern Western County. And we made a great luncheon at Holy Cross to honor her and all the other students that really have set themselves a mark for the cost of this area and state. So those are my updates. And the second part of my update was, I know that last month, I presented you the FY '24 budget. And I know that we are looking to move forward this process. And I believe tonight is to do conversation, but also vote on FY '24 budget.
So last meeting.
So just before we start talking about it, just I'll make a motion when the group motion is presented, because we can't really talk about it till we hear some of his motion.
Second.
All right. Last meeting, I asked if anyone had any questions to shoot me an email or to reach out to me, get them. So we could go through that process. I didn't see anything. Didn't know if there's something that's been, if you guys have questions or something we need to address. I know that this is a significant increase versus what finance committee was hoping for. I think, in my opinion, what we're looking at is what the school needs to A, kind of maintain its current status quo and meet the obligations of increased costs coming from things that are pretty much outside of our control. And I think that this is, in my opinion, it's a starting point. And I'm sure we're going to have a lot further conversations with other boards in the town to figure this out. But I'm looking at this as, I didn't see a lot of that in the budget, what I looked for.
So I want to, if I have any... First of all, before we start the conversation about the budget, I made a mistake in that which when you gave the report on the finances, there were only four warrants in this package. There really only been four warrants since the last meeting. There's only four signed pages of the warrants.
I can double-check the Mr. Gould. I believe that's what we, we put in what was between last meeting and this meeting.
Okay. So two of those aren't copied in such a way that we can actually see the warrant. So like, you could just pay, you know, absolutely anything with that, but of course. So I didn't send you any questions because I didn't get this agenda until this Friday. And I didn't have time to look at it until today. But I went through the budget this morning. And a total of 39 out of 57, well, there are 57 lines in this budget, this document that, the pages that we just talked about that are in, what's the name of the project here?
iVision.
iVision. That say that there's 100% of the balance still available. 57 lines say 100% of the budget that's on those lines is still available. That's 68.4% of the budget. And 50, 39%, I'm sorry, 39% of those, 57, which is the actual 68.4%. 39 of those seem to be around salary. And I don't believe that we are paying our teachers. Is that true, Mr. Rigney? We are paying you all, right? So I'm just wondering how these, how this is right? Because this is the document that you gave us for the budget. And the line on it say 100%. I'd be happy to share this with you. I lined them all so you can see them. But just for example, I'll pull one. Custodian High School, it says the budget number amount, and it says remaining budget, 100%. budget, a hundred percent. I mean, that's throughout, I mean, substitute Custodian line item, I'll give you that one to decide. There's thirty-six hundred dollars in that line item, and there's thirty-six hundred dollars in that. So I don't understand how that is possible. I understand that we didn't have this meeting until six weeks ago, whatever, but I don't know how this is supposed to help me to rectify this budget, so.
Yeah, I, I can't speak to your exact question of why that's showing up the way it is. What I can tell you is that the memo page on the top, which I referenced, like my financials, is where we're at, we spent sixty percent of our 21 budget.
And I understand that, and I respect that, but again, I specifically asked to see what we've spent against the line items, because now I have to look at this book and say, yes, it makes sense that we want to increase this line item by X amount of money, because clearly we're on track to spend all the money that we've already budgeted. And I can't do that, because I don't know what we've spent based on the documents that were provided to me. So I made the motion, because we have to get a number down to the town, and obviously the worst possible number we're going to get to the town is the number that's in this book. But the fact of the matter is, I can't, I can't justify this number, because I don't have this information backed up, and I'm being asked, I mean, we, as a school committee, we have responsibility for finance, for shared responsibility, we have curriculum responsibility, and, and then the management of you, and I don't, I can't forego one-third of what my responsibility to the town is without having, or do that, without having the information. So, and I know Mr. Cannon, who just spoke about the line items that are overdrawn, there are fifty-four thousand, six hundred and eighty-five dollars in overdrawn line items, and we haven't seen the transfer request for any of them, so I don't know, I don't know where that money, I mean, I'm imagining, and I don't know, but I'm imagining that when you approved the expenditure for those line items, that you knew.
Some of the money will come from grants, which are still going to come down, which will back to the general fund, so that's what we're basically, so those are our expenditures right now.
Okay, but I mean, I don't, and again, I don't know, right? So all I, all I can go by is the information given to me. So with that information that's given to me, I couldn't, I couldn't sit in a town hall meeting and argue that this is the right budget number. I'm just putting it out there, I can't do it, so that's all I have.
What is the significance of the highlighted, there's some numbers that are highlighted in purple?
I think I'm saying as well.
What's the significance of those?
Page seventeen.
There's a few throughout.
Yeah, page seventeen has you.
So if you look here, I don't know if you, if yours is in color. That, I don't know.
The ones on the left, those are your notes.
You just don't know the ones that are highlighted in purple?
Oh, okay.
You let to know what that's present.
These are notes, some of those notes are from City School Kids, so I've, I'll ask them after.
It's one of those that the balance is negative five hundred eighty-six percent, so never mind the one hundred percent, remaining, what was the five hundred percent under?
That's in part, that's, that's a special transportation line item, that's because that some of that money was, a lot of the money was not budgeted, that was my initial.
If they're hard to see, utilities are difficult, yeah, they're hard to see. I haven't, I haven't. But again, I think we owe the town a number, I don't have a number other than the number that was presented, so I just don't know if that's the right number based on, I see, I would suggest, Mr. Chairman, that we see a little more meaning to review the budget and see if we can get better numbers in front of us within the next couple of weeks, because I'm sure we're going to get called in front of the finance committee to have a conversation with them when they, as they're working through the budget, and I don't, I don't have the confidence in front of the town to ask, because not saying it's not needed, I don't know.
So you're looking through, and your motion?
No, simply making the suggestion as part of the conversation, that we should do that as well. No, I think we have to send a number down to the town, we don't have a choice, they, they've been very patient with us, this is supposed to have been done according to the judgment that was here last month, it was supposed to be done in January, which I don't know how we're going to make people do that anyway, but regardless of that, they're waiting for a number from us, and I know that we take up the most significant amount of the town budget, so I think we owe them a number, and I think as we get, this is a process, right? So as we get closer and closer to town meeting, we should be able to go to the town and say, this is what we think it is now, and this is what we think it is now, but I don't think it's going to get any worse than the number that was, sorry, I don't think it's going to get any more expensive than the number that was presented. I shouldn't say worse or better, because it's a judgment. I don't think it's going to get any more expensive than the number that was presented, so I think if we give them that number and say that's the budget that we have at this moment, that we've made a commitment that we're going to work through and see what we can come up with, and we'll work with you, I think that that's the best we can do at this moment. Okay, hold them in hands.
Can I ask again, what was, what was your explanation for some of the line items, say, a hundred percent of the salary for some, oh, let's see, is still sitting there, and yet you're saying that the top, at the top, it's gone, you know, like it's accounted for at the top, it's sixty percent spent, and, but the line item says a hundred percent of it's not been paid yet, say therapeutic services speech for high school. How does that happen again? I, I don't know if I missed the explanation.
I know, I didn't really, I don't know why some of the individual sheets are not, are reading that, but I can't explain it to you.
Oh.
Those questions, but I will tell you that in my conversations and looking at order to the program, we have expended sixty percent of our overall general budget, our operating budget to this date. I think the date on this, on these papers was February 20.
So these are on March 16th? This is March 16th, printed on very long, October 16th.
The memo that was on that was.
February 28th.
Oh, that's on 2/28, I think, sorry, I was looking at this date, I don't remember.
So I, Todd, that's a very good question, there is some mixed messages with the numbers, and I can explain, you know, the one question about the, you know, the five hundred percent for the transportation, that's because that number was not budgeted appropriately at the start of this process last year, and some of our grants, like I said, have not been drawn down to this point, so that's what we're working on now to edit through. But, yeah, I don't have an answer of why that, that form is showing up the way it is.
Is there a, is there a lapse, or is there a, because this is February 28th, what paper is exactly come through? Sometimes there's a gap in that, too.
I think that, so the last warrants from the last one, or we, and February, is that correct? That sounds correct, I was looking for something like that.
Well, and that's the last week of February, because we were writing the snow day, it's like that, so it probably is true.
So it was after, our February meetings, oh, late February, late February, it's 2/28, so it's on the last one.
I believe it was the one that just before 28, so the 27th.
Do you need to, I do feel we can get together that more, if we can break down prior custodian engagement, right after we go to the, I think, clear, look more, get this kind of sorted out.
Yeah, I think, I think we need to sort it out, I think that what I gave you doesn't align with the initial, not all what I can say, the initial pages align, like I think that way.
And just maybe, if we can get that in Excel versus print it out, that would be helpful.
I'll see what you can.
If you can, yeah. That'll be just, that I'll have to print it on, that's all. Thank you.
All right, so we have a motion and a second to approve this budget, send it to the town. All in favor of approving the budget, sending it to the town? We have a lot of work to do at this point.
You sound great.
I got my mask on. Hey, I texted all of you, and you're very wonderful with me, coming nice, good myself. You're fun. Says this is progress, just two days ago. Administrator's reports.
Thank you, Chairman, question. March has been an exciting month for us, it's been busy. I definitely want to recognize Ms. Hansen for all her efforts for the PC trip, as we recognized tonight. There's much going on, but it's exciting to see that culmination of all of her efforts and her daughter's efforts come to fruition, it's exciting, so thank you. What's been going on within the high school? The senior advisor facilitated a graduation committee meeting this past month, the guidance council facilitated a scholarship committee meeting, pretty exciting stuff. As Olivia noted, Ms. Malone took Jane Drovich, Shannon Toomey, Mary Minkichi, Bree Hutchinson, Olivia as well, and Sophia, two of the Massachusetts Association of School Committees down the cake, and it's pretty exciting, again, student government is a straw that stirs the drink here at North Porkfield Junior Senior High School, it's pretty exciting, they make it go. This past month, Officer Jeff Martin came into the building, met with grades seven and eight, nine and 10, 11 and 12, to present an Alice training, and Alice, I always make a habit of spelling out my acronyms, alert, lockdown, inform, counter, and evacuate for all students, all students were tutored on this, and my real measuring stick was, and it's uncommon to see this, but I said, okay, who wants to be in the team picture, and I included those in my newsletter, and about anywhere from seven to 10 kids jumped to be ta, have a picture taken with them of Officer Martin. Jeff Martin works really hard, his relationships with our students, he succeeds, there's a strong level of trust between the North Porkfield Police and our students, which is tangible and I think, so that's exciting to see. Mr. Cannon hosted a evening for parents and student athletes for the spring, we're currently fielding softball team, and those student athletes showed up, as well as the parents. Again, after Superintendent McCormick's words of Sophia succeeding and getting recognition, I'm also very proud of that, and that's exciting. The highlight of my month, though, out of many highlights, was to be able to, at the invitation of Ms. Priestley, to read the book to a bunch of sixth graders, All the Places You'll Go by Dr. Seuss, that was a hoot, I enjoyed it, and they are silly, but they were enjoyable and they were fun, I really enjoyed that, I look forward to doing it Ms. Bonnie Milner, co-founder and owner of Longview Farm Recording Studio, continues to work with Ms. Chain Ford on enlisting students on our future, to provide students with a voice through multimedia presentations, and it's really exciting. To me, there is a lot, a strong student interest in this, and it's exciting to see, and I think it's an example of how we have the capacity to establish partnerships between community members and the school, and that's what we work for. So thank you for that. Mr. Blumenthal continues to fundraise for the music program, this past week, he had a winter concert, or spring concert, with students in attendance while I attended the All-Star Game up at St. Mary's in Harvard. So it's an exciting time, a lot of good things are happening under this roof. In terms of teaching and learning, Ms. Rachel Disjardine Smith, School Adjustment Council has initiated a homework school club for students, under the director, Mr. Zippen, Nathaniel Stonehouse, a rocketry club is ongoing. Ms. Julie Nani, the district attorney from the liaison of District Attorney Joseph Early's office, conducted a presentation on the dangers of opioids to middle school students. We continue to make progress on working, for instance, with the math coach and trying to utilize our math testing data, and trying to have that in form of our instruction. We're also articulating our curriculum, for instance, today we worked on Portrait of Graduate, as well as made a lot of ground in terms of this idea of what is rarer, and I give credit to Mr. McCormick on promoting that, not just at the high school, junior high schools, but K through 12, which is exciting to do. I anticipate April to be as exciting in a month, we have a lot of things going on, and it's going to, I'm looking forward to the spring weather, and I just want to share on a personal note, I've been doing office detentions and getting kids to come in for consequences, and I had a wonderful Friday afternoon where I sat down and broke down an essay with a student, and the student doesn't always have nice words from me, but they were genuinely thankful, and it brought me back to this idea of teaching, and it was wonderful, and that student went off empowered, and I must have spent forty-five minutes with that student, just breaking down each sentence, talking about what a thesis statement is, and that was out of Mr. Hatch's class, and I, of course, reported up to Mr. Hatch to say, I don't need stuff on your toes, it's just all input is involved. So it's really a fun place, in my opinion, I think North Porkfield's uncommon, it's a close, intimate community, and it's exciting to come and be there, so thank you.
Your rocketry, we're invited to be invited by fellow school committee members, if you'd like to stop by, April 14th, I'll be doing stuff rockets with children over the elementary school and their day festivities.
Awesome.
And that last year was hilarious, it's really fun. They had a blast watching them, they, it was great, so, you don't have to come all day, but if you want to stop by and see kids fire off rockets into the parking lot, it's fun.
What's the date again?
April 14th.
All right. Thank you for that.
That'll be, that'll be a good time, it's very entertaining, it's in the old school cream room, it's usually where they set me up.
Nice.
And I did it last year, it was so fun, took the day off, since I saw, but it was on the calendar.
I look forward to attending.
Mr. Corey, do you like, I'm not in position to read the board.
Sure, of course, so I'll just go through Ms. Priestley's notes, she unfortunately can't make it here tonight. Kindergarten enrollment, registration has begun in the 22, 23, two to twenty-three, twenty-four school year, enrollment packets are available in the main office, MCAS testing dates, so some of the following dates, so students will test on the following dates for English, grades three and five on April 10th and 11th, grades four and six on April 12th and 13th, math for grades three and five on May 16th and 17th, grades four and six on May 18th and 19th, and grades five on May 22nd and 23rd. This past week, with the conclusion on St. Patrick's Day, we had a March spirit meet, which concluded, Monday was M and M Monday, where later assigned M and M color, Tuesday was a snow day, and Wednesday was a late open, but Wednesday was also a wacky Wednesday, Thursday was PJ Day, and Friday was St. Patrick's Day, so a lot of our students wore friendly.
Do you know what she means by assigned M and M color?
Uh, I think it's per grade.
Okay.
Per grade, yes.
Yes, kindergarten was green.
I was just wondering if they like, have you taken M and M out of the hole, and that's the color you have it wear, I don't know, so, no, thank you.
So, let me see, oh, so, our reading process American Day, which Dr. Blue spoke about before, was on March 2nd, we had several, I want to say celebrity years where we blew out celebrities, when we had several people from the community came in and read some books from our students, I read to our kindergartners and our second graders, so I had a really nice time, both of those teachers are appreciated, coming into classes to read, and then we also ended that afternoon with magician Tommy James, who has been to the elementary school before, I believe he was there a year ago during Halloween, but does a fantastic job, and we bring in pre-K through six, which is a wide range of ages, but he's able to catch up a whole audience, and all students from pre-K to grade six are engaged and involved, so he has a redish job, we'll bring him back, and that was paid, and we for grants, so that was something that we brought in, and it was not part of our initial operating budget, so that's it for this month, Ms. Priestley, I think Dr. is busy, just, go.
So in a similar fashion, our, we're doing MCAS, and we have alts that are due next week, we have preschool screening, parents are calling and setting up registration times for April 5th and 6th, we have applications that are going up on our website, so they will be available for families to select which they would prefer, and then those that do not get.
do not get selected can go on our waitlist. And then I just wanted to highlight a couple of professional developments that some of our staff have been able to sign up and attend this year, so we had staff set up for Zones of Regulation, Wilson, we've been doing our transdisciplinary approach down in our preschool, which is one of our assessment tools, we've had staff attend some ADHD strategies and interventions, we've had a couple staff do Breathe for Change, which is yoga and meditation, so just, just some things to highlight for the community, and we've also had staff use some of the professional development through their contract to take some courses to help professionally grow, so I just thought I would use this time today, and I have to share that.
What is Zones of Regulation?
It's a way for students to identify their emotions, and we use it in our classrooms, particularly in the younger grades, but as they learn, they can help identify and help regulate to identify what zone they're in, and then, and then we use it across, and it helps kids, so it's language that's familiar, and then kids help each other, and so, the more, the more students in staff know it, the better, the better they can help each other.
We have, the snow day that happened the other day was on a half day for professional building, so I believe they can move it to another day, have a half day another day, without us having to both change the school calendar, is that, I hope we see that.
So I don't know that that's ever happened, but I believe that we need to make sure that parents are aware of that change, because parents, obviously, parents, it's based on to, since we improve the calendar, it should probably.
Do you have a subject?
We're working on dates, but I just want to.
Make a vote upon, to his discretion?
Can we do it sometime after our next meeting? Officially approve it?
We can vote down, to his discretion.
Yeah, yeah, that would be a big motion.
Make a, make a motion. Or actually, no, this is, are you still business?
Yeah, I guess so.
Go ahead.
I'll make a motion.
Yeah, you're right.
We already proved, yeah, I'm sorry.
Yeah, I'm going to make a motion that we allow Mr. McCormick at his discretion to change the schedule, the calendar this year to add a half a day, because this past half a day was wiped out by the sunset.
How much notice?
I'll second the motion, sorry.
All right, we have a motion and a second.
So can we put a friendly amendment in the case that we give at school, can we give at least, the parents at least, I don't have kids at school, how much staff notice do you need, like?
I think a month is fair.
What do you, what would you know?
I know we're getting close to the end, though.
I mean, I always give them, I always give reminders, right, we can miss, you know, but.
Yeah, but they have situations, yeah.
Yeah, I mean, a month is a little bit long, but I can, I definitely give them plenty of those.
I think at minimum two weeks, I would like three, I think that a lot of people, it's hard to arrange.
Right, I don't think two weeks is out of the question, I think.
No, I don't think two weeks is on.
So I think, so I think, so, can I make a friendly motion that the superintendent give no less than two weeks' notice?
Yes.
Preferably three weeks' notice to the parents.
Yes.
So you have a motion, friendly, so, all right, another ready motion.
Any further discussion of this? All right, all in favor of Matt's motion and Ron's friendly motion? Minimum two weeks, I think, three. Any other of your business? You guys have anything?
I just look like.
I know, far away now.
Separated by the volume.
My voices, I think, anyway, I said, be closer to me, so, all right, I don't think we have any reason for extending session this evening.
No new business, I don't see, no policy, no new business.
No policy, we have no old business, no policy, so I figured we just jumped to new business, which is that day, I think, so.
So before we adjourn, I may or may not be here next month, and my CEO just told me that this morning, so since I may or may not be here next month, Matt, I say thank you very much for the work that you played at the school committee, and you're not running for reelection.
I know, they'll probably all do everything next month, but I may or may not be here this long, so I, we have to say thank you for our work.
It's a lot of work, I know, but it is a lot of work, so I appreciate it. Now stop walking, you dog, that's a mess. Mike, I'll vote for you, watch back, never mind, you guys don't need to be here, anyway. I make a motion, adjourn.
Second.
All in favor?